Okay, I think we'll get started. I want to thank you everybody for coming out this evening and for our board voting meeting. We'll start with the questions.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic of workers' stands. One nation, united in all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is our August board voting meeting. Last Tuesday, we had an opportunity to review the agenda. Most of the items on the agenda were reviewed last week, but if there's any interesting further discussion for any items on the agenda, we'll be glad to do that. We're going to start off this evening with public comments. An opportunity for anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment, either items about items on the agenda or any other issues that might be relevant for us as a board, feel free to do that now. Just please identify who you are or your phone.
Julie Cox.
Please sit. Yep. Use the mic and turn it on.
Oh, sorry, did you have the button on? Doctor, you went up with the... All right, here, turn it in.
I'm in.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh. I'm Julie Cox, and my children have been in Exeter for a while. And one of the things I'd like to talk about is the fifth grade teacher. I know that it's been a little chaotic trying to hire a teacher for the fifth graders. And when I found out that when the school system sent out the notifications that there was no teacher assigned to a particular classroom, it was kind of disheartening for me and my child. And I was kind of delving into the questions as why. This is background. I've grown up with a lot of teachers, surrounded by a lot of educators, so I kind of understand how the process works. When we went to the orientation, I was hoping to get more information, and it was helpful. The principal explained was that there was a lower enrollment for the class going into sixth grade, and they also had a teacher leave, so it worked out well that they didn't need to fill that position, which makes sense. However, this year, you have, what I understand is, the normal amount of enrollment, and they had not identified a teacher because the decision of having a long-term sub filling that position had eliminated two teachers that were kind of on board when they accepted full-time positions with other schools. Naturally, it's a difficult thing to hire a teacher as a long-term sub. So my concern is, this problem isn't going away. We have those fifth graders coming in. They're going to need at least 12 teachers. They're going to be moving to sixth grade. And from my understanding, the upcoming fourth graders and third graders have the same amount of enrollment. Now, I understand people come in and out of the district, so you can't predict yours in advance, but he did say that this lower class is not the norm. So my concern is, why did you make the decision to go with a long-term sub? Because in my world, when you have a contractor come in, they're generally not 100% vested, and also, it's difficult for a seasoned teacher to come into an environment. There's a learning curve, and now you have a teacher who, I'm assuming is newer, I don't know much about the teacher, I'm sure you do, but this is a big concern for me because it's not going to be going away. So is there a potential that this is just long-term sub for this year, and then next year, you will have permit teachers to cover the students that are coming in the building for Reifden?
Yes, on a lot of what you just said. Yes, it is based on numbers, and that's how we decide if it's going to be long-term sub or not. Our numbers are going down, so there is a concern of giving contracts out when the numbers are going down. Quite honestly, the person you're speaking about is on tonight's agenda to be hired.
Yes.
It's just, as you said, we had two long-term subs, excellent candidates, and they were good enough that they were given contracts in other districts. We have been very fortunate to gain a lot of solid long-term subs in our district, many of which we do hire contracts the following year, either it's a position that we're in or the next opening that's in the district. That lead that I'm sure with this person is, I personally interview everybody that we hire, and she's an excellent candidate. We're very pleased to have her. We will make the determination if she's going to be given a contract or not at the end of the year. Again, the numbers, though, are not the same in fourth grade. They're going down. They're going down in all our elementaries, with the exception of a couple of classes. And as they move up, they shake out because of the trans- trans- transience of our students that come in and come out and things like that. But no, it wasn't, it wasn't an ideal plan, and it wasn't planned this way. We had had the first long-term sub hired quite early, but as you mentioned, anybody that's a long-term sub is going to continue to interview for contracts. And she was given a contract. We went back into the pool, had another excellent candidate hired. She just recently got hired somewhere else. So we went back in the pool, and luckily, we found someone who's, again, very strong.
So what's, I guess, what is in the contract that prevents this person from leaving throughout the school year? Like, because that's the other thing I'm worried about, consistency. Can they leave at any time? Or is this something that there's...
Anyone can leave at any time, even the contracted people. So again, that's a concern that you have for every teacher we have in the district. However, a long-term sub, and when I interview them, I make it very clear to them that they're on stage, and if they do shine as we think they're going to shine, they will have every opportunity to gain a contract. In all my years, I've never seen anyone leave in the middle for that. But again, if a contracted person in the middle of the year moves for family reasons or whatever, we will move as quickly as possible to fill with the most capable candidate.
So one other thing is, I did ask this of the principal, what is the school district doing to help transition this teacher in as quickly as possible? Because they don't know if they're hired until tonight. School starts on Monday, so they have a lot of work to do to catch up, let alone, you know, lesson plans. And fifth grade, not that any grade is not more important than others, but fifth grade is an important shift. You know, you're not in the elementary school, but you're not in the junior high school, and, you know, these kids are coming in with new students from all around the district. There's a new teacher. There's a lot of excitement. However, that teacher needs to get caught up as quickly as possible so that class doesn't suffer in their education. And I'm not saying that's an intentional thing, but anybody going into a new position is going to have some adjustment period. So my question is, what support system is for this teacher to do the best job they can do?
Sure. Well, like any new teacher, they have a mentor. They will have someone that they'll work with them to bring them into the district as well as their classroom, help them with every question from where do you get the textbooks to how do I help, you know, hand out attendance, things like that. But I interviewed this person last week, and my presumption is that the board will approve this person. So when I spoke to them, I asked them, are they prepared, what would their plans look like for the first day? She had all the right answers. And she's not an inexperienced teacher. She has some experience. So she's already planning what she's going to do. She was quite excited, brought to tears, so she really wants to be there.
Okay. Thank you.
I do appreciate you coming up.
Any additional comments? Okay, we're going to move on through the agenda to our next item, three, which is building program report. And this will be our director of facilities for our Zui, and he gave us an update.
Thank you. Good evening. You've all received my written report.
You're too tall.
Well, then the next person is going to be too short. You've all received my written report, so what I'd like to do this evening is update you on the construction projects, because that was five days ago where that information was written. So I'm going to go through the vestibule project first, and then I'll touch base on the HVAC project. Up at Lorraine, vestibules are in, card readers in and functioning, walk-off mats installed. The only open item there is the painting in the office from the new construction, which will be taking place tomorrow. At Jacksonwald, the painting is completed. The walk-off mat will be installed tomorrow. They were out today to prep the surface because they needed to skim coat it, so they had to wait for that to dry, so they will be in tomorrow morning to address that. The card reader is installed. Simplex will be out in the morning because they have to make some final connections to make that operable, but that will happen before noon tomorrow. And the exterior doors are complete, installed, and the only one open item on the door there is the boiler room door, which is not done yet, but students don't use that door, so that was last on the list. Junior high school, vestibules complete, tile work was replaced, the marble tile. The card reader is in and functioning. The only open items there is one small strip of carpet that needs to be installed tomorrow morning. They actually found a matching carpet for the main office in our attic stock, so they will be installing that tomorrow. And a painting is there as well. The most painting was at Jacksonwald, which they've been working on this week. The painting left at Lorraine, and the junior high school should be completed tomorrow. So that's the vestibules, HVAC. Jacksonwald's chiller's up and running. Building's cooling down as we speak. Lorraine is a different story. The pumps that were on back order will be delivered tomorrow. Those pumps will then be installed by Thursday, and the system will be filled and cycled through, and all signs are pointing to that system being fully operational by Monday when students return. So that's what I can think of right now. So if you have any questions, I also would like to note that I have Matt Wymer here from Hummer to answer any questions that you guys might have on the varsity baseball field drainage.
First question I have for you, Rob, is how are we doing with the LED lights? What's the status for everyone?
The LED lights, the non-dimming lights are completed in all the buildings except for Lausch, which they're working in now. The dimming lights were addressed to the point to get them to work and function in most of those areas, meaning that the fluorescents are still in. So now we're moving forward with discussions with Dolphin on how to address that.
Are there any projects outstanding for the summer you felt you couldn't get to? Was it time, resources, et cetera?
I mean, we're coming down to the wire here, so we've got a couple more days, so I'm confident that we'll get most of everything that I want to address addressed. The only project that sort of I would have liked to have got done sooner would be the Reifden work, the drainage issue behind Reifden, which is in progress right now. Stackhouse Bensiger is working on the drainage plan, the storm and grading plan there that they hope to have finalized by this week for my review, and then we can go and either put that out to bid or obtain quotes, whatever, whatever the purchasing policy requires.
Next Tuesday evening, when we left here, I guess around 9:00, you should see, the lights were on.
One of the electrical boxes was broken and had water in it. So the electrician addressed that, yes.
So everything will have lights?
You have lights tonight.
You will, you will be able to see when you leave tonight.
He's been assigned to have a flashlight walking out. Do we fully turn?
I know at the last facilities committee meeting, you talked about getting ready to do summer cleaning after all the projects were done. Are we making progress with that, or are you concerned that we're not going to have enough time?
Well, I'd be lying if I said I wasn't a little concerned, but we're, me and, I'm working with Eric Orsak, we're taking steps. We were, we were getting in areas today that we haven't been in all summer because of the construction. So we have, the staff has gone on mid-shift this week, so the night shift is working 12 to 8:00. So they're able to go in and get stuff done without the contractors being there, and we're making plans for that to continue and possibly have people in on the weekends if we need to this coming weekend to make sure everything's ready for Monday.
That's booked inside and out.
Yes.
I know that we talked previously about the carpeting of touring at Lorraine. I think you said you replaced twelve rooms?
Yes.
What's the situation with the tile, do you think, in the hallways? Have we noticed, or I guess, hollow spots, for lack of another term, when we walk through the building? Is that something you can get an expert in and book that or something?
Yeah, I'm working on that. I'm working again, all about floors, who helped us with the carpeting situation, do the similar thing with the moisture readings and stuff like that. So that's my plan for, once I get the kids in, we can find a space that won't be disruptive and do some tests and move from there.
Rob, the, to piggyback on James' question about the LED light in Alwatten, can you expand on that a little bit? You kind of truncated it. Are you, are you, are you talking to Dolphin? Are you...
Yes.
Give you a little more?
Well, I basically, and don't want to talk too much out of school here, but I basically made it clear to Dolphin that it was my opinion and the opinion of the boards that they're responsible for providing us what they quoted us on. So right now, my major concern is that lights work when the kids come back, and I don't feel comfortable having lights that don't work. That's why I mentioned about replacing fluorescents. Now, when they got to Alwatten, they quickly learned that a lot of the rooms weren't accepting the LEDs, so they didn't end up changing. Well, it's not like we changed all the dimming bulbs at Alwatten and had half the building with an issue. So, you know, the marching orders I gave to Frazier, who is Dolphin's contractor, but also our, you know, contract electrician, was that on Monday, when students return, that all the lights need to be in functioning order. That's dimming and non-dimming. Did that answer?
One thing that I just recalled quickly from last year, I believe, we were having problems with humidity in some of the locker rooms. Are we seeing any of that again this year?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And that was something that...
The team rooms?
Yeah, they're in the team rooms. There's a situation that KCBA even looked at while doing their facility study, and the ventilation system in there is inadequate. I believe they found that when they did the addition on that school, I don't remember the year or date, but something was done where the ventilation system that used to be sufficient wasn't sufficient anymore. So they do have some recommendations of us changing out some of that equipment for larger, larger exhaust units to address that. So that's something that I can work on when the kids are here.
And if I'm remembering correctly, we had talked about that briefly, I think, at the facilities committee, and there was a debate as to whether or not it was a, I guess it was a structural problem or...
Well, the structural problem there would be if the ductwork couldn't handle the additional volume of air, which would increase the noise factor. But KCBA, and I believe that it won't increase the noise fa... It's a loud, it's a loud area, usually when it's getting used anyway, so the cheaper and more responsible solution is to put the new units in, the larger units on the roof, because the other option there is you're ripping out walls and replacing ductwork, which will get expensive very fast.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead here.
Change the direction a little bit. Kind of just to stand a little bit. So, Rob, that we've mitigated the really terrible mold issue in those team rooms, can we be sure that they're going to stay?
Yeah, we put, we installed dehumidifiers in there, and the custodial staff is keeping an eye on it, and they're going in there, you know, through their normal cleaning process. You know, part of the, part of the problem, too, that compounds that is, is the, there's air conditioning in the coaches offices and not in the main areas, so you've got the rash temperature change, which causes a lot of the humidity and the moisture buildup. So right now, we're combating that, or at least making an effort to minimize that impact, and looking at short-term and long-term solutions, like mold resistance on the tiles and things of that nature to put in there until we can address the ventilation system on a more permanent note.
Yeah, I mean, you know, as you know, mold can be deadly for some people, so I think we just have to step on it.
Yes, very much so. And even, a lot of people have allergies to it. It's not deadly, but it is uncomfortable, and it's not something that we take lightly.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Since we seem to be on the athletic part of this, all the locker situations have been worked out. You haven't heard any new questions? I know about a year or two ago, we were dealing with the lacrosse team, and are all the teams feeling like they're adequately handled right now?
That might be Mr. Legat's area.
Well, Mr. Legat...
It's kind of a cleaner.
Well, Mr. Legat hasn't bothered me for new lockers, so, you know, he's not shy in letting me know what he wants.
He's just waiting until we give him the field.
Has Mr. Legat voiced any concerns about the football field slash soccer field slash field hockey slash lacrosse field slash track team in the near recent past?
No, the only issue we're kind of working on is there's a drainage issue over at this varsity softball field as well, not to the extent of the baseball field, but just some washing out of the water coming down off the hill from the junior high. So we do have a contractor that's looking at, that's more of a grading issue than a drainage, drainage issue. So we have someone working on a proposal for that. So that's what we're working on with him.
Well, we have to gather our last facilities meeting. We had a chance to walk through the school house since we were over at Jacksonwald, and we noticed a few things there. One was the spackle on the inside of the wall, which seems like a very unique talent anymore. Is there...
I got a lead.
Anyone that does that?
I have, I have, actually, through the broker who's doing our vestibules, has a guy, that he gave me his number, and I'm reaching out to, to see if he can come over to do some old-school plastering for us.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things we noticed there also was, I guess, to build up the heat inside is really, because there were some concerns that had been voiced previously about moisture. We didn't see any moisture in the basement. We did notice that there was one of the accesses for a bed that had been knocked out by someone. It seems more of a shading problem on the one side and the other side seems like it's baked. I don't know if there's any way to allow ventilation into there, since we don't have any electric into that. Maybe something...
It's something I can look into, yeah.
I think there's ways to ventilate that.
Aside from leaving the door open when it swells and won't shut.
So I just worry about it for a while, but we'd have to see if it will shut up. On another note, we have a leak, apparently, in the gymnasium. It's here, there are some buckets.
Yeah, that was a clogged condensate line from the unit up there that's been addressed. Those buckets haven't been moved because I get nervous with water dripping on gym floors. So that was taken care of, but just not cleaned up yet. The barrels removed yet, so.
And that same area in the gym, that was where the wrestling club had asked about coming in. What are the steps or the progresses they made on their access to the building at this point?
The, the date in which those mats are getting installed was pushed back, I believe, to the week of September 4th. We've been actively getting rid of the excess furniture in there. To this count, three 30-yard dumpsters worth. There's a dumpster out there now that's probably half-full. So we probably have that and one more dumpster to go before that area's cleaned out, but that's a matter of two days, three days. Once the kids are back and things slow down, I know that's weird, but for facilities, that's what happens. I'd be able to sort of move some manpower around to come over and take care of that and finish that out before the mats come and get installed.
And we were informed by the wrestling club that they would come and help it. So there you go.
They can show up anytime.
So you all, you just coordinate it.
Okay.
I think, Tom, did you want to add something to the locker room question that Jamie had asked?
Yeah, I was going to let you know, all of that was worked out with who was in what locker room.
Okay. Good. So, Rob, I think you did a good job this summer with all those projects that were going on. There was really a lot of work living in the neighborhood. I think every single one of our buildings had something major going on. So props to you on addressing that. I will ask my annual question, which is how are lights at the football stadium? Are we...
There were two lights out that Frazier had a work order to have replaced by Friday. So I will stay on top of them, too.
But thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Any other questions for Rob?
Do we want to have Matt?
We're, we're going to get to that. Yeah, we've kind of moved some things around on our agenda. We just have a few more things to move.
Sure. Thank you.
Don't be pushy, Mr. Legat.
I've been pushing you all summer, but...
Okay. We'll move to the next section, which is minutes. We have board voting minutes from July 17th, and I move that we approve the voting minutes as presented. The motion and the second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Treasurers' report, Mrs. Patient.
This is the... The Exeter Township School District financial statements for the period ending 7/31/2018. The following financial statements are attached. The year-to-date summary of revenue and expenditures, all funds, statement assets, liabilities, and balances, payroll and fringe benefit summary, investment statements, and student activity. I move the treasurer's report.
Second. Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Patient. We're going to move on to the back of our agenda to item 12A, which begins, I'm not sure what page, 14. Okay. On page 14, I'm going to turn the agenda over this, on this issue, to Mr. Brady, who walks through the Hummer.
Okay, we're going to go first through the recommendation for approval, and then we'll go to discussion. Slaughterman, it's the board's school directors authorized the district administration to accept a proposal for Hummer turf grass systems to standardize baseball infield and outfield renovation drainage project at a total cost of $177,588, pricing as per customers by 5%.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, we're going to have a presentation of the Hummer on their, how they feel about the process of installing everything and how it's going to work for us.
Okay, fine. Gentlemen, please feel free to come up to the...
Help him with the mic, pipe it through.
Dial this down. I think Rob was a little taller than me.
Thanks for being here this evening.
Yep, thanks for having me. Is there any specific questions that I could ask about what we're proposed to do out there?
I think one of the first questions was, after you finish all this up, how do we know if the water will not just lay in, in the areas in between the system? For example, right now, we haven't had a soil test out there. What if you get out and do a soil test, you find out it's pretty much 70% clay? And therefore, you're not getting a lot of penetration, not any infiltration. The water's not moving into the system, so you have pockets of water. I knew that was what it was.
What we look at, and what I looked at on the outfield, where we wouldn't be affecting any grade changes, is the grading of the outfield is really pretty good, looking at as far as the surface smoothness, the slope. Those are two things I look at visually. You know, Pennsylvania soils, Redding area, we work, we're, we're based in Langston, Pennsylvania. We do a tremendous amount of work in Pennsylvania and are familiar with Pennsylvania soils. This type of spacing is what we typically install on a, on a natural grass baseball field in this area. So I don't have a concern about the soils.
Also, just to let you know, too, I, I did have a recent soil study from our fertilization weed control program that I did forward to Matt for his review, and he said, looking through it, he didn't see anything that would affect the, the operation of the drainage system.
Once you're building the system, where do you exit the water from? How's the water outlet from your piping system tie into the existing inlet basins? What's your system?
It would tie into existing inlets. There's one in right field and one in left field. I think it's kind of the bullpen areas on both sides. There's some existing stormwater systems that we tie into. So there would be a visible outlet, you know, that you could see the water coming out of the system.
What kind of warranty or guarantee is that the system will work?
We offer a one-year, you know, workmanship and, you know, material warranty with our work. We have over 120 of these systems that we've installed on natural grass sports fields throughout, throughout the Mid-Atlantic. I've been to Boston, down below Baltimore, to do these, these systems. We've been installing these systems. First system was 1989 at University of Pennsylvania.
Could I just ask, are we, is the price that we were quoted subject to change at all, depending on any of the field conditions that you might encounter when you're working there?
Not that we, not that we've seen, no.
Okay. And one of the things that had surprised me is that we didn't, and this, this may have been just the process that we went through, that a site plan wasn't done before the project was quoted. And I was just kind of surprised to buy that. Could you just... Could you just, I, I don't know if you can speak to that at all, um, if you have any concerns or about how that process, uh, works? I'm not sure.
Our typical process, on, on the outfield, we want to leave, we want to do as minimal disruption as possible, okay? Our system, we're able to cut that into your existing grass, on your existing grass surface. All the spoils come out of the trench into a cart off the field. The drainage materials go into the trench. So everything is, is clean, is as minimally invasive as possible. Uh, the infield is, uh, is a typical, what I would call a typical infield renovation, that we do a lot of, standard practices. Uh, baseball infields, uh, typically have lips and, uh, things like that to build up over the years that don't allow water to move off the surface. Uh, so that's something we would engineer in the field as far as the grades and things like that based on our experience.
Okay. Um, the price, I think that we were, I don't know if I have it in front of me, um, for the outfield, I think was above a hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
And maybe I, I'm just looking for research, but I'm just surprised that if that's minimally invasive, to me, that's not minimally invasive. And I'm not an expert.
Yeah.
I'm glad that you're here tonight to speak to that. But I, I'm just confused about that.
Okay. Well, if, if we were going to go out, remove all the grass on the outfield, regrade the outfield, install the drainage, put new sod down, the cost would be much higher than, than what I'm quoting.
Okay.
Uh, so what I looked at is that the, the existing grade, the surface smoothness of the outfield, is suitable for me to install a drainage system over top, uh, plant grass back into drain lines, and then you can, you know, maintain your grass from there with, with your, your efforts that, that Rob's already put forth.
Okay.
Has this been an ongoing, uh, concern for the district, or is it just because we had so much rain this, this year?
Yes.
You sure you have?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, this has been an ongoing concern every, every year. Um, I do have our varsity baseball coach here. He's been our coach, I think, for about twenty-five years. And I am gonna just kind of defer to him because he is on the field every day. Um, yes, we had an unbelievable amount of rain this spring and snow and whatever else. Uh, but I'm gonna let Justin Fries just kind of go over in his twenty-five years here. I think this field was built in two thousand and five, just what he has observed on this field to answer your question.
This has been an ongoing issue, uh, since the field was done. Uh, I think originally when the field was built, the plan was to put a field out here behind Loush. And that was the first thing that was cut from the building project at the time. And they turned the baseball field to make it fit in the existing location. Uh, before the field was turned, there was never a water issue, because home plate was back in the third bay, in where the left field fence is now. It was never a water issue at that point, because the area of concern in the infield was the right field foul territory. So it did very little to disrupt the baseball game. Um, now, since the field's been done, the, the field was, was put in in two thousand and five. We didn't play on it until two thousand and seven. Uh, we were satellited down to Pine Hill Park and we played there for three years, uh, prior to that. Last season, um, we didn't get on our varsity baseball field until April, uh, fifth. The previous year, we weren't on the varsity baseball field until the first week of April as well. Uh, anytime it rains, if we get a heavy rain, that war sits there for two to three, four, or five days, uh, sometimes, uh, just because the area just, it, that underground stream is in there and it just, through the spring, and the water just sits for, for days. Um, you know, it's, as a high school baseball coach, it's frustrating because we're practicing in auxiliary gym, trying to get ready to play on an outside field. Um, last year, our first day outside, not in Florida, so thank you for approving our trips to Florida, uh, but our first day back in Pennsylvania, the last three years has been our first playing day. So, and it's been always at an alternate site. Uh, the last couple of years, we've played at Manheim Township. And our first, the last three years, I think, our first two weeks of home games have always postponed. Last year, we had fourteen postponements on our varsity field. So, because of the rain and the, and the weather issues that we've had, um, you know, it's, it's, it's a situation that's been going on. It's an ongoing thing. Um, you know, and I, I, Tom and I have talked a lot about, is there an alternate place we can go? We practiced in the field house a few times. Uh, we've practiced, obviously, in the gym, uh, way too much over the last couple of years. And unfortunately, this is our, world antlock, so there's not another opportunity to move the field to another spot. Uh, you know, so we've been making do and making it work. The outfield, we're able to practice on the outfield, but it, it takes away on a baseball field what you really kind of can't do. We have a batting cage up and, uh, but the infield, from the pitcher's mound to home plate, you can't, a lot of days you practice from the pitcher's mound out. And you can't even go into that area because it's so flooded out. Uh, you know, and this, this project here, hopefully will, will be the cure. Uh, my, my concern that I mentioned to Tom was, there's no water on that field. So I don't know if there's a way that they can set a drainage system up that water can be used then to water the field as needed. Um, you know, that's, that was one of my concerns that we talked about. I know Hunter and I talked about that at our, at our meeting, uh, earlier in the summer, uh, to, to get water up there, or if there's another way to get water up there to, to fix some of the, the water issues as well.
Thank you. It, the, it sounds like the problem, the main problem is with the infield and, you know, what you were just saying as well. So, um, is there consideration to just repair the infield? Because, and why so much work needs to be done in the outfield?
When we've gotten the heavy rains, there's always water lining on the outfield watering track. And a lot of the outfield watering track is, has washed out over the years. And, you know, from the street, it doesn't look bad. But when you get down to the field, it's a lot of squishy and squawky as you're going through. The, the major concern though is the infield.
Question, three questions there. You mentioned previously the field was rotated a bit, so the left field was the home plate.
Yes.
Um, now we have it rotated ninety degrees. In the position it's currently in, is that the preferred angle? I know for baseball, typically, is the sun supposed to be perpendicular to the, to the batter and the pitcher's line? Do we have that running on right now, or?
We, we have a mid, like, in, like a four fifteen game, the left fielder has the sun in their face. Um, you know, that wasn't an issue before it was turned, but the reason it was turned was so they weren't hitting balls into the building. When the cafeteria was extended out, they, they then turned the field.
So do we, if we rotate it back, though, as we would, do we have the width to put the outfield poles in and then put, like, say, the eyes a little?
Yeah, I don't know.
Um, with, with the underground stream that's there, do you feel that we're going to have to worry about infiltration back up through your new system? Or do you feel that that's not, not really a concern to be concerned with?
Not in my experience.
Okay. Um, in constructing this, are you pushing the backstop further towards the street? Or are you basically just repairing and replacing the umpire and the whole, you know, home plate area?
The, uh, the backstop was, was another part that I was, that I mentioned to Rob about.
The backstop's not in his quote, 'cause I don't believe that was close ours. Um, uh, we can address the backstop in, with in-house. I can, not in-house, as an archive would do it, but I can do that separately from what he needs to do with another contract.
Thank you.
I just have, uh, two issues. Um, with the water draining into the stormwater system, do you require any township approvals in order for that to occur?
Not that I'm aware of.
I suggest that I consider that before we.
So, when we're, when the water's leaving the site, it's going to our in, our inlets that are already above our ground, right?
Correct.
They're not going to extract what it wants. I, I would.
These are inside, they're inside.
Just the, all it takes to make that, for what it takes to make that foam collar probably just clear anyway. And the other questions, and just, uh, with all due respect, have we done a reference check on, on, yes, okay.
So the, the question that I have is, if, is kind of a piggyback on what Sharon said. If the infield is the major problem, of course, the outfield is going to get wet.
Yeah.
Are there puddles out there? I, is that the problem, that there are puddles? And because of that, to, to raise the thing that Jim said last week, does that make it unsafe? Because of, of course, grass is gonna get wet. Ground's gonna get wet when it rains.
Yeah.
And, and the second question would be, are we sure that the water that's collecting on the infield isn't going into the outfield? So therefore, if we take care of the problem in the infield, will it take care of the problem in the outfield?
I'll answer the first question.
Sure.
So, what you can visibly see on the infield dirt are puddles. You can visibly see that from standing and looking at it. What you can't see visibly puddles is the outfield grass in the puddles, unless you physically go down and walk the field, um, which I have to all the time. I don't have the shoes to show you anymore. They're disposed. Um, but it is considerably wet. Is it wet to a point where an umpire would walk out in the outfield and say, "We can't play"? Like you can see on a dirt infield? No. Um, but it is considerably wet. I am not an expert in, should that water go down and drain? Is it not draining the right way? I, I do not know that answer. But I know that the field is wet enough when you go down in the field where you sink. Um, and from my understanding and talking to Justin, that's not, that wouldn't happen at our, um, JV baseball outfield below the stadium for the Irvine soccer field.
So can we get away with just doing infield? Because that, that's, it's sixty-two thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars, and the outfield is a hundred and fifteen. Can we think about doing this in the two steps? Let's see if the infield, uh, drainage problem takes care of it, and go back and revisit the outfield later. Can we think about that?
Do you want to answer the second part of this question? I, I don't want to answer.
What was the second part of your question, sir?
I was kind of asking.
Okay.
Well, do you, do you have any insight into that, whether, uh, working on the infield will mitigate, uh, any of the problems in the outfield?
Well, I would say most fields that we work on, um, when you, you fix one area, especially wetness, drainage issues, the areas that, that weren't so bad before, really are bad now, because you're back on, on dry footing. We want to move the puddles that, that he was talking about on the infield, we want to be able to move that water towards the outfield, okay? We need to move that water off the skin and keep it going. So if anything, improving the grade on the infield would be moving a little more water out towards the outfield. Uh, base, spring sports, um, you know, I played baseball. Luckily, I was a catcher, so they always had a nice tarp where I, I was, so I stayed kind of dry. But the, the limiting factor in spring sports, spring baseball, spring softball, I talked about softball field a little bit, is moisture. It's not because it's too dry, um, or anything like that. It's you can't get on the field because it's wet. And, uh, that, that would be my two cents. That's my two cents, working on sports fields, working on baseball fields, and having played the game is, is, uh, is drainage is your number one friend in the spring.
So, this is one of my questions, um, for the board. Um, and I may have missed it, so I apologize if it's kind of a dumb question. There's no dumb question. Um, where is the funding for this coming from? Is it coming from an athletics budget?
And we'll be able to address that in the best, wherever you have this question.
Well, would things like this come up and they weren't originally part of, say, the general fund, uh, it would be a candidate for funding of the capital, um, project fund? The board did, uh, uh, approve capital project fund, but it's something that can be changed with, you know, an approval of a subsequent project. Uh, so that's where, you know, we come out of those projects that's something, funds set aside for private projects.
And is that, is that, um, fun, does that fund, or I should, let me rephrase that. What else does that fund, fund? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure. Actually, you know, Hunter and I asked the same question earlier today. And, uh, right now, our capital, well, all, you know, pull them all together, capital funds, anything outside of the general fund, um, there's about nine point six million. Remember, we also have commitments in the general fund for capital projects. So just, let's talk about the capital funds set aside, which they are targeted for improvements. Uh, this year, we are, we've moved a lot, uh, into this year, uh, four point four million. So, um, by the end of, uh, six thirty, two thousand and nineteen, and this has a small piece of general fund in it, I hate to confuse things here, we have about six million dollars in, you know, capital targeted funds. Uh, KCBA's long-term plan, five years out, uh, is another three point eight million. So three point eight will be spent on point nine. Uh, you know, they also provide a clause ten years out, six to ten. Uh, that's another four point nine. So, you know, the point I was making to Hunter earlier is, a lot of these have to be revisited, because they have to be updated. Our estimates are from April two thousand and seventeen. And things change. Uh, you know, we, with each year, we really have to sit back with the architect and, you know, identify, is this, and with the board, is this something that we really want to do? So probably sharing more than I need to, but it would come out of this project.
So by use, by, by paying for this project, it wouldn't be taking away from any academic or special ed or, um?
No.
This capital funding is for improvement projects. This is what I'm learning. I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not smart in your business, in the business, no. I'm learning.
Would no one would, you know, teach.
Well, so, but that's not, I mean, my, my major concern is making sure we're not taking away from, from education.
No.
You know, as much as I love athletics as well. Um, and I think it's, it's, it's important. I just, that's, okay. Um, and then again, it's, thank you, Ann, so much. Um, if we fund this project, are we going to be funding turf on the softball field next year? And is that going to set up?
Well, we're not buying turf this time. We're still afraid.
Drainage, sorry, drainage.
Drainage is a different question. Turf is very expensive. I'm hoping that, for the possibility, that whatever the situation there is, a grading problem where we're getting run off of the hillside, it's ended with drainage in the area versus having something where the water just doesn't get through the earth. Would that be pretty much how it's going to be?
Yeah.
The grading on the field itself sheds the water.
Yeah, the water's staying on the baseball field. It's going through the softball.
Question, Tom, regarding the use of the field outside of spring baseball, is that field used in the fall for fall ball or any renovation?
Yes.
In the summer?
In the summer.
But summer's not our student body. I'm wondering, in the fall, do we have our student body on the field?
We do, yeah. I just have, I could, I just have a question. Um, based on your experience with these types of remediations for these fields, what's the longevity we can expect of this, um, system that's being put in here? Do you have any experience in terms of long-term length, when it, it will last? And if it does fail, is there a remedial process that would, you know, correct it?
The, uh, the system that we're putting in the ground, the pipe, the sand, the gravel, that, that will last as long as the field's there. Um, we have fields, probably the oldest field that I can think of, be over, that I'm aware of, I've been doing this for eleven years, uh, would be before my time in West York. That field's been there for over twenty-some years. Uh, over time, uh, and I'm talking way, way down the road, you may need to do some surface work to the grass. And when you do that surface work to the grass, you want to keep in mind that you have a drainage system underneath. Uh, but as far as that goes, it, it's a, it's a long-term solution to your drainage problems.
And if we were able to do anything in the future, let's say, uh, a permanent turf option, um, or synthetic turf, would this system be able to accommodate that?
No, sir. Because when you put in artificial turf, you need to set that field on subgrade, on hard, on clay subgrade. And since we're working with the topsoil in place, everything that we're doing would be removed.
That would have to be removed then? The system would have to be removed?
Yeah, because as part of installing an artificial turf field, you have to remove all topsoil from a, from a sports field. That's any sports field.
But the system underneath of it would have to be removed too?
But the system underneath of it would have to be removed too? Have to excavate the entire system?
Yes. Yeah, we're going to, a lot of that system would be removed when you remove the topsoil. Our pipes would be down below that, but you're going to be doing more site work to get a turf field in there than to save our system.
And where to put a turf field, you basically go down about a foot to eighteen inches. You're down the pipe, as you know, and I mentioned, you have a harsh stone layer goes in, clean stone, for specifics. And there you bring in sand, and then you have a whole layering system. And that whole idea is that the water just sheds. It goes straight through. And then you think the turf is only this high, the turf's actually that high, and it's going to these little rubber pellets. It's a really complex system.
I'm just wondering about the excavation of the current system.
That would be, it's two different operations.
Yeah. It wouldn't pose a problem if down the road you wanted to do that.
Can I ask you, what's your role in the company? What's your position? Are you the owner?
Yes, sir.
How many employees do you have?
We have about twenty.
Full-time?
Full-time. We've been, Bob Hummer, my mentor, started this business in nineteen sixty-nine. We have Sporting Valley Turf Farms, which is a sod farm. We've been operating for fifty years in Manheim. Hummer Turf Grass Systems, this is our forty-sixth year of operation. Unfortunately, Bob passed over the winter and then passed the business down to me. Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions or any additional discussion we have to make any decisions in the sidelines?
I just wanted to add one thing. Based off of the numbers that Ann had provided me that she was referencing earlier with the capital fund, and I just did shorthand, and I want to emphasize, because she emphasized to me that these numbers are subject to change, possibly in the next couple of months, depending on what KCBA gets back. But at the rate of the projects that we have, including this, our current assets in capital fund would be completely expended in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. So after that point, we would have to find new monies than what we have right now. Now, that's, I don't think, a bad thing because we would run out that year anyways, whether or not we do this project. But that's only on the money that's there now, and we'll continue to add to that, I think, over the next couple of years too. So I just wanted to add that to lend to it, to lend to that discussion.
Any additional comments?
Can I, can I make a motion that we split this into, that we vote for a amended?
You're making amended motion to split this proposal into one, the infield, one out, outfield?
Which would be sixty-two five eighty-eight for the infield and one fifteen, one hundred and fifteen thousand for the outfield.
So we have a motion, a motion in second on that. Any discussion?
Would the price be the same? You didn't do it at once?
No, it's seventy-five hundred dollar difference.
So if we have to do the outfield later, it would actually be more?
Yeah, as it's a bet. Tomorrow, next year, it might be ten thousand, maybe a little less.
Could also be five.
I'd got that.
You did say that if you only do the infield, that that could then create more water problems through the outfield? Is that what you said?
What we're looking to do is on the infield skin, okay? The area, the dirt area of the infield, there's puddling there now. With that area, we need to move the water off the surface. So the idea is that that water would more readily move towards the outfield area. Yes, ma'am.
So that's going to become more of a problem then? The outfield's going to become more of a problem once you fix the infield, is that right?
There's going to be more water heading that way.
Will there be a drainage system in the infield then?
On the infield, yes, on the infield grass. The infield skin, the soil area, that area, the water needs to move off the surface. It's not going to percolate through with a drainage system underneath. The pipes will run underneath, but that's just basically a pass-through so we can get the pipe from the infield diamond into the outfield. Okay, on the dirt area, that composure of material will not percolate through. You want it to move off the surface.
Would the infield system be connected to the drainage system? To the, the current drainage system we're proposing for the outfield? I mean, would it be connected, not to the proposed system in the outfield, but to the current system of drainage that we have out there?
The, as I remember, I believe there's catch basins up closer to the infield that that infield would tie into, okay? If you only did the infield. If we do the whole field, our pipes would run, would bridge between the infield and the outfield.
But I just think to answer, just a yes or no, Mrs. McLemone's question is, would the water be worse in the outfield if you only did the infield? Is this yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any additional discussion? The only thing I would say is that, and I realize what we're trying to do here, but, you know, we look at, when we do some of these projects halfway, they always come back with costs that's more. I think of the track at the high school, you know, we voted and I voted against doing it completely. And just a couple of years later, that thing is now, which we're looking at, is going to require several hundred thousand dollars to fix. So I just, I think the board should just consider, you know, the short-term savings versus the long-term, you know, the math as well. So we might save money now, but we might end up paying a lot here and so forth. Any additional discussion?
I'm kind of wanting to take a shot that the incredible amount of money that we had this year will not be repeated. And I would say let's do the infield and see if it works.
Call the question on the other.
Okay.
So the amendment is? The amendment is to split it in half and to have two votes. The first vote, let's vote on the opposed amendment. All who are in favor of splitting the vote, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
No.
Sure, Ann, please.
Those in favor of splitting the vote, say aye. Raise your hand, I'm sorry, raise your hand. And those opposed? Okay, so the motion, the amended motion is not carried. We're back to the original proposal and revisional motion, which was already moved and seconded. So is there any additional discussion on the original motion? Okay. All in favor of the motion to purchase the system for a total of one hundred seventy-seven thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
We have one opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, sir, for coming out and answering the questions. We really appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
I'll thank you for the opportunity.
Sorry to pepper you.
No problem.
I have one question, Charlie, we have another call. When will this occur? How soon will we get, do you have your nose to proceed, or how do you expect, will the locals utilize the site, or what's your time frame?
We're a few weeks out right now with our schedule. The goal would be to have this in the ground this fall.
So before the end of planning season, is your?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move back to our regular order, and we're back to second page, item six, board policy. We've got several items of policies A through H that are being presented for second reading. These have been reviewed by the board on two subsequent, two board meetings. And I don't believe they need any additional review. At this point, I would propose that, at this point, we approve four second reading policies A through H. Motion in second. Any discussion on any of these policies?
Can I just say, I just want to make sure here, because I did this last time. Okay, there it is. All right, yes. So for items B and C, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Winter and Dr. Phillips, and also to Dr. Miller. This was a, not a long haul, but a haul. And I'm just really proud and really grateful that we're moving in this direction because I think that this is really opening up our district to all the students that live in Exeter School District. Well, not all of them, but, you know, this is a good first step. And I think this is really in light with the model that Dr. Phillips had talked to us about, individualized learning. I know that there are other school districts that are really making a success of this, like Governor Mifflin. And I think that this is a really good, wise first step to make sure that we're entering carefully, but boldly. And I'm just really excited that this is going to be happening.
Props to Hunter for bringing this thing up, I think probably in our very first meeting as a board, and for sticking with it and making sure that it got done because you're giving value, we're giving value, to the taxpayers who are choosing to homeschool their kids. And pay fair is fair. You're paying for it, you should get something for it. Props to you, Hunter.
Any additional discussion? All in favor of approving the policies, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and Mike's not here, so.
Aye.
Mike, aye? Sorry, Mike. All right, let's move on to items I through O, and perhaps a little bit more discussion. Here, these were reviewed at our workshop meeting. However, Mr. Brady brought up a good point about policy three oh two last week, which was up for, actually, up for second reading. We did a little further investigating with PVE and, I'm sorry, with PSBA, and realized that this policy had been revised since we just received the revision last May. And it did make a substantial change. So that change in that policy is highlighted in green, in your version. It essentially identifies the amount of time the board's required to provide notice to the superintendent and assistant superintendent prior to termination of their contract, going from one hundred and fifty days to ninety days. And some additional language in terms of failure of the board to take action at the neck rate of time. And the requirement to extend the contract for an additional year in case the board fails to take action. So that's the nature of the change of that policy. Otherwise, the rest of the policies we have here remain the same. The nepotism and consensual relationships policies are policies that were unique to Exeter and were viewed by our solicitor in some detail, and ensures us that they're both enforceable and acceptable as they're currently written. Are there any questions about any of those policies, I through O, that were proposed for first reading? Okay, I move that we approve I through U. The motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're going to move to business functions. Mr. Geller.
Thank you, Dr. Geller. Item A, ID of the special education recommended to the board of school directors approves the fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen. ID of the special education grants the state's program agreement with the VCIU for a total amount of six hundred fifty-four thousand, two hundred sixty dollars, forty-nine cents, and authorizes district administration to execute the agreement. Prior year funding was six hundred seventy-three thousand, three hundred fifty-four dollars, fourteen cents. Funds are to be used to support special education standards.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Dr. Miller, did the numbers go down because our population decreased or because the funding was cut back? Do you know that?
I'm not sure.
It's a per student funding formula, right?
Per student, I wouldn't say our numbers changed considerably. We have, you know, some variation, but nothing considerably. I don't know whether Ann feels, they looked, I don't know whether they look at also with our funding formula that we have a decrease in our costs, and so I don't know whether they think that is part of the funding as well. Do you know?
Well, the funding is based on a few different components. One is the student count.
Student count.
One is poverty, you know, the funding available. Thought I had brought those news with me, but, um, just give me a second. Seventy-five percent is on childcare, so our numbers are down a little bit. Remaining percentages are broken up between enrollment in the rural district and then poverty.
But it's a few students, it's not a lot.
I would say considerable, but it's less than.
Any additional discussion or comments?
And what services do we get from the IU for this amount of money that we have?
We don't receive services, it's a pass-through grant. They pretty much handle all of the administrative aspects of the grant. They go through the audit. The school districts themselves determine how they're going to use the funds. We use, we use them over the years to fund new special ed teachers. And we also fund the extended school year program with funds. And then we report to the IU when they reprocess us.
So has, excuse me, the extended school year, has that remained the same over the years as were the amount of time, like special ed students get in the summertime?
Sometimes. Well, it's a, it's usually a four-week program in July for students to come in to have a re-apply program. That's relatively the same.
Because I was talking to my neighbor who has a special ed autistic student, I mean, autistic child, and she was saying that she was just hoping that maybe it could be extended a little bit more. Was it four weeks or five weeks or something like that?
Four, we had four weeks in July in a four-week program, and that's very typical. School districts run a four-week program, some run a three-week program. So it just all depends. Some may run a five-week program, some, a four-week program is very common.
So do most students then that are in our school, do they usually then use the same system also?
No, we have, you know, seven hundred special education students, and we had, um, fifty, sixty, between fifty and sixty. Fifty, sixty students, in district students. And then we have several, as you approved through the board, that could go to out-of-district statements for much longer and more intensity at quite programs to out-of-district places. But in the district, about fifty or sixty, and that's been pretty stable too. About fifty or sixty students in our in-house program.
Any additional discussion?
I just, Dr. Miller, can you quick tell, when you say seven hundred students, special ed, that would be students who have an ID? Is that, is that the only?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any ID, is not reflected or filed for?
Not gifted or filed for.
Okay. Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item B, Vanguard Investments, four oh three B plan vendor. It is recommended the board of school directors approves Vanguard Investments as an approved four oh three B plan vendor as part of the district's four oh three B employer plan document, which was made effective twelve thirty-one oh eight. And if he's assessed by Vanguard, it will be paid by the participant and not the employer.
Motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item C, delinquent interim taxes. Recommended board of school directors approves the submission to the Berks County Tax Claim Bureau. The Exeter Township School District interim taxes declared delinquent for six accounts in the amount of five thousand three hundred forty-seven dollars, fifty-three cents.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item D, fireworks approval. It's recommended the board of school directors grants permission for hometown heroes. Hold fireworks show near Don Thomas Stadium. It's part of the charity event on September ninth, two thousand eighteen.
Discussion. Is this, is this part of the event that will benefit, is it such charity, is it?
Mr. can say this with hometown heroes.
Yeah, I mean, is it, does it have a benefit for the school district? Does this have any?
This is not for the school, this is for his organization, maybe somewhere.
So it's, okay. Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item B, bus transportation for athletic, other extracurricular and field trips. Recommended the board of school directors authorizes district administration contract for bus transportation on an as-needed basis for fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen for athletic, other extracurricular and field trips. The district will utilize the bus. The district will utilize the bus services of local contractors which include VCIU, new roads, line transportation or brand new line transportation.
Good motion in the second, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask our personnel director, have we had any success in getting additional, oh, those drivers for our school?
Yeah, we are doing the best we can, we actually, we have a new assistant transportation supervisor.
Uh huh.
And we always are looking for drivers, that is always a challenge simply because it's not a full-time job.
We don't have them yet.
So we haven't gotten any additional drivers?
Yeah, but we, we're always looking. We're always trying to run out of them too, so.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item F budget transfers, is recommended the board of school directors approves budget transfers for the month of June two thousand eighteen. Amount sixty-nine thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars, which have already taken place.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Gill. We're going to move to personal committee and Mr. Japina.
It is recommended the board of school directors approves or ratifies the following appointments under administrative staff, certificated staff, support staff, extracurricular staff. And I suspect we'll vote guest teachers separately.
Okay, so we'll keep guest teachers in advance for this work. Give the motion in the second, any discussion?
I just got a question back with folks, um, the, on page four, no, not page four. Page ten, um, I'm not sure I'm going to say it any right, but Miss Sgro. Are we at that point or is that already not there?
Miss Sgro.
Sgro.
We're not, but I, I can either answer now if you'd like.
It's just a question, um, I, um, and I think it was like some families have been asking, the, who's a kindergarten, Anna Watten. And she's leaving and then the, the teacher who was on maternity leave is now, or family leave or, yeah, I think it was, everybody knows it was maternity leave.
Yeah.
And she's coming back, but how's that, how's that work with this teacher leaving?
Is that, is that survey true?
Okay, that's why I would ask you for like clarification on that.
When you get to her, you want to do it now, it doesn't matter. Um, she was a person who just got hired, it's a full-time job, she was a long-term sub. So we actually had someone who's retiring November first. And she was going to be a day-to-day sub, for lack of a better term for us.
Oh, so it wasn't for the kindergarten position?
Yeah.
Okay.
So she's going to now be slotted in that position. So they will have a single teacher for the full-time until the teacher comes back November first.
For a different position, not the kindergarten, sorry, I'm confused.
I am not too.
Okay.
What, this is talking about. Yes, who is, who is going to be retiring in November?
Okay.
Who's going to be a day-to-day sub for us?
Okay.
Will now become the long-term sub teacher in that spot in question, in kindergarten until the teacher comes back.
And, okay, and Miss Sgro.
Sgro is, is taking a full-time position.
So the confusion still lies, who is the kindergarten teacher at Watten? Because there's, they've seen this name and they've seen another name.
Well, they, they've seen this name up until about a day ago. I think I just, I just got the letter of resignation, I believe, yesterday. Very, very quick. Um, the person who will be taking over was the teacher Jackson Wall, not Kiscan. So I'm sure, I'm sure Mr. Freeze will be on that in his letters of parents and so forth.
So, but she's coming back, the permanent teacher, who's a full-time teacher already. It's coming back in November and so the students will have her in November, but till then they're going to have somebody else.
Kiscan, yes, which they would have had for Miss, Miss Sgro as well.
Yeah, got it, sorry, that's very confusing.
Yes, if you figure it this way, it's just Mrs. Sgro is going out and Mrs. Kiscan is going in.
Okay, got it, thank you for clarifying that because rumors start to get talked about.
But until, until, you know, we accept their resignation, we can slot your person in, Mr. Freeze, you couldn't say much.
Kind of like Julie was talking about with, you know, long-term subs and this and that. And it does, where it gets out and, but just, no one really knows what's going on until.
Well, again, it wasn't much we could say about her until tonight, if you guys approve it.
True, okay, thank you.
She didn't tell her, or does not.
Okay, so we're back to appointments, with the exception of guest teachers, any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It's recommended the board of school directors approves or ratifies the following resignation.
Did you, give me a second on that, okay, we have a motion and a second on the guest teachers, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, we do have discussion?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, sure.
I had asked last week when, uh, when Miss Tija pulled this back, I had asked, you know, why, why? And so I was just wondering, like, I understand, like, they cannot get a sub, like, so they try to get teacher subs first, that's the priority. And then if not, they call on a guest teacher?
And they go through a training process through the VCIU.
Right, is that like a three-day or something like that?
It's certainly not a teacher, it's certainly not a teacher student.
So do you find that there are a lot of guest teachers are used, because there's a long list of them here.
Well, we have a long list of them, that doesn't necessarily mean they all come when we ask them because they're everywhere else. Um, but they do a nice job, I've had some principals try to lobby me to have them become a long-term sub. Because of what they do in the classroom.
Can I, can I just point to one example? I think Mrs. Hi, Mrs. Sharon Hi was on ballistic guest teachers last month for approval. And I can one hundred percent say hands down, when I was at the high school and the junior high school, she was by far the best sub that I have ever had. And that's because when you came into that class, you were coming to learn. And a lot of kids, especially me, sometimes, saw sub day as an opportunity to.
Mess around.
Yeah, we'll go with that word, mess around. Uh, and she didn't take it. And we learned while she was there and she subbed in many different positions and I was always seriously impressed with her. Um, and she was on that list, so I just want to point to that as an example.
I'd like to concur with what Hunter's saying and with Sharon Hi, I know for years she's been one of our, well, not long-term subs. But she's one of those individuals that a principal or either a high school or junior high immediately says, don't let Sharon Hi go away anywhere else. Because she can control a classroom, she was a professional before she got in here, she's a trained CPA. She's a very professional individual who knows how to, oh, she knows how to control teenagers and pre-teens in a very productive manner and get them focused. And not to slip, as they always have the, if the slide during the, during the sub. The slide doesn't occur because she follows the lesson plan and she stays on track. So I, I think that our guest teachers are an asset to us. I think if we find that we have a guest teacher who's not performing, we typically don't invite them to be a guest at our table any longer. Um, and I think that they're a resource that we have to have at this time because there aren't enough available substitutes of their trade. And their teachers, I mean, if they're qualified, they're teachers, they probably have a job or they have a long time to sub. In this state, you go to other states, it's not as favorable.
And is it true that we see like their degree behind their name, is, is that the course that they're studying for or not always?
Not always.
And is it, are they usually, is it fair to say they're usually in the high school or not at all?
Unless not always.
Okay.
I, I could ask about that because of the guests and I understand that it's going to be better if you have a qualified guest teacher. Than if there's no sub and you, I know that in other buildings, other districts, they have teachers on a planning period go and cover subjects that they are not qualified to teach. So I'm not, I just wanted some clarification because it came up recently.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Good one done, motion carries.
It is recommended the board of school directors approves or ratifies the following resignations, certificated staff.
Good motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended the board of school directors approves the attached list, list of course requests.
Can I intercede a little quick? Um, consistent with the email that I sent last Friday, I was wondering, I was hoping that we could vote on Kristi Haller's course request separately. Uh, due to a previously stated conflict of interest that I have.
Okay, so we'll break it out and break this quote out and the first quote would be, the entire list with exception of Kristi Haller. So we have a motion and a second for that list, or do we, we don't?
Yes.
We do it, okay. Um, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we'll take a vote on that Kristi Haller conference of course requests. And we'll accept the motion. Motion? Second, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions, extension due to a conflict of interest, we have one exception. Thank you.
Consider course requests, staff conferences. It's recommended the board of school directors approves the staff conferences.
Any other, motion and a second? Any discussion?
Second.
Okay, now we have a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Japina, student function, Mrs. Strath.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approves the attached senior high school, junior high school, Brighton and elementary handbooks for electronic distribution.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approves the attached agreement between Exeter Township School District and Polium Inc. For Exeter Township School District Supported Cyber School Program for the eighteen eighteen school year to assist the district with coordinating the Exeter Supported Cyber School.
Second. Any discussion?
First question, is mostly anticipated cost issue? I see per day and I don't see a total.
This is an agreement though, this is, we're not saying how many students there are at this point, this is just the agreement of what the day rate would be for each student that we put in the program. Am I correct?
Yeah. And the bunch at about twenty.
About twenty.
So, so really what it is, is it's just the agreement of when we put people there, if that's what the rate will be for in-house.
Yeah, this is in-house.
It, it's our in-house program at this time. But the agreement is what the rate will be.
So, um, Doctor Miller, um, Manitow is going to be part of this still?
It's a name change.
Yeah, they changed their name, they just changed their company's name, um, but pretty much everything's going to stay the same. They, they rent half of the building on this side for the AEDY, a separate program that they run, it's a full-day program, other districts kind of roll students. It's an AEDY program, alternative ed for disruptive youth. And then the other side of that, uh, pod, um, we run as a supported cyber school, which is our in-house program. We have been so lucky because they run the other program over there, they've been able to support our program with teachers, licensed social worker, stand and bussing. That we just lucked out because they're right there and they've been able to support us. So we have not had to hire two or three teachers to be able to support that program. And so it's been actually saving us quite a bit of money as we've been getting that program built up.
And I think you're trying to, did, did we have fifteen last year?
Fifteen last year, as of right now, we have thirteen enrolled in the morning and four enrolled in the afternoon session, so we are getting near twenty pretty quickly.
Yeah, so would you have, if there were other students who want to come, would you have space in the twenty?
We have space, we have space in the afternoon, um, yes, we've kind of been able to expand a little bit over there. So we're trying to accommodate students who would like to come to the program.
Really quick, can I just ask, Doctor Woodis, what, uh, intersection does this have with the administration's forthcoming plans? None, uh, for, for a district-supported cyber program?
Good question. So, um, you know, it was very important on my end that, you know, we not try to, like, change anything in the district during the year when we have something established already. And so, you know, in having dialogue with Doctor Miller, with senior high administration, with teachers, you know, we elected it for this school year. To keep, you know, use BBA, use BLN as we have been using. That allows, you know, me to work with teachers and administration and basically begin the planning process of what are the other digital content providers that are out there? Um, what kinds of things flexibly can we do with the senior high schedule to free up teachers? Um, you know, how are we going to track attendance? So it, it really, you know, keeps us right in line, you know, with what we're doing and allows Doctor Miller and I to work collaboratively. To see what we've been doing, where we'd like to go and merging those two pieces together.
So ultimately, the administration's current goal would be to substitute this program with the district one, is that correct?
Doctor Miller, with the name change, is there any change in leadership, any management change, any curriculum change?
No, actually not, it's all the same people.
I just had a question as to why we provide solely rent-free, do we get a price break on the, for student rate?
Well, the supported cyber school part that this is talking about is our program. So we be renting it to ourselves. Um, the other program is AEDY, it's not rent-free.
No, we, we charge them rent.
They get charged rent, for the program that they run separately, the AEDY on the right-hand side of the pod over there, we charge them rent. Supported cyber school is our program. So they just help us manage it.
So when it says in the contract that it would be services be provided to the district, uh, or that most services district provides no costs. With facility, technology, networking, that is strictly to the.
Supported cyber school, yes, there's two separate contractors, one for the AEDY that Manitow rents space from us. And then this one is just their per student and the rate, because they do provide a lot of support for us. And so we had to figure out a contract, um, language to provide the funding for helping us out.
Any additional questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approves the attached two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen year agreement with the VCIU to provide services for special education students that are detailed in the agreement. At an estimated cost of ninety-one thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Good motion and a second, any discussion?
So, um, what, um, of special assistance do we send out to, um, the VCIU or?
These services that we will be purchasing from the IU are more the services that actually come into the district. So, uh, teacher of the hearing, teacher of the vision, orientation and mobility. Uh, we have a student who needs a deaf interpreter, so that is at quite a costly expense. And so these are students who will be here in the district, but, uh, they have very highly specialized needs that the IU provides us with support.
So do they go to the IU then or do they come to?
The IU really doesn't run too many of their own programs anymore, so they provide the support here in the district for the vision, hearing, orientation and mobility. The deaf interpreter, uh, the sign language interpreter, those kind of things.
So, it seems to be primarily akin to the services or related services? Any, any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approves the attached agreement with Polium Inc. Let's skip some wording here, um, to provide alternative education for disruptive youth for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year at a cost of sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars per year. Or a hundred thirty-one dollars per day. Transportation, if requested, would be an additional twenty-five dollars per day.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approve a tuition agreement between New Story Reading and the Exeter Township School District for special education services for student number six one two one eight one nine for the eighteen nineteen school year at a cost of two hundred ninety-nine dollars per day per student, or a total of sixty-nine thousand one hundred and sixty dollars.
Any discussion?
So, where Redding is, is this, um, pending?
This is the campus in Perkeomen. This is the campus that they moved to, um, Perkeomen Ave.
I'm sorry?
They came as next to Perkeomen Ave. They used to have two campuses and now they've opened three, they split their autistic support program into two campuses, so they now have a building on Perkeomen Ave that they run.
Oh, Perkeomen Ave?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have one now. Motion carries. Thank you. Athletic committee, Mr. Rens.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, bring two things to, uh, the board's attention. Um, Tom shared with me that our athletic train, our lead athletic trainer, Audrey, uh, had received national recognition within the Athletic Training Association of the United States. I don't think that's the acronym, but that, yeah, that, that sums it up. Um, they, they won, uh, recognition for their Stop the Bleed program. Um, and in addition, Audrey is being asked and is yet to be approved by the board, but she's hopeful, um, that she'll be taking a position, um, not, not away from Exeter, but a position with the National Board. So, that will, uh, really be an opportunity for Exeter to show our influence, um, especially with some of the program that she's been doing nationally, which is really exciting. Uh, in addition to that, um, Tom wanted me to let you all know that our programs, uh, for athletics for the fall are ranking up, and he's really excited. And we have a football game on Friday against Berks Athletic, um, and he's confident that we're gonna stay with him every yard. Happy to take any questions.
When are we going to have the, the fire, the, uh, bonfire and stuff with us, that going to come out?
Homecoming?
Yeah, homecoming.
When it's homecoming?
Well, do you know what?
There's your calendar.
I believe it's not. It's in your calendar, you have one of those calendars, you've got it in your folder.
Well, I didn't look at my calendar yesterday.
First, we have a date in October, which would have some excitement in your life, and today might say the second, I'm not sure.
Well, I just want to say, um, the last time, last year, I was, the homecoming was fantastic. And, um, and the bonfire was fantastic, so I would hope that, I know, I was, I, I think I've been telling myself and Mr. Quinter where it was in, were in the, uh, in.
Did you buy the float, did you buy the float?
Right, the Corvette.
I was in Corvette. Not my Corvette.
Do they have a stick shift?
I don't know if they have a stick shift.
Was it propane powered?
Somebody put the Corvette glove, let you breathe their Corvette.
Mr. Rens, thank you for your athletic committee report.
Of course.
Curriculum programs, um, Mrs. Hacker.
Yeah, I'm going to direct to, to Dr. Winters to share what they're doing. There's been a lot going on this summer in curriculum. I think we shared some, some of it last week, but, yeah.
We've had a really busy summer curriculum-wise, a really positive summer. A lot of work has been done related to math. Um, Mrs. Belinski has just been amazing working with our math teachers. Uh, grades, uh, K to six. We had teams of teachers, representatives from every single building, get together two, three days at a time, put together curriculum binders where we broke down the standards based on PSSA, identified gap analysis, basically completely revamped the math curriculum to better align it with, um, both the investigations and the CPM program. Um, I'll ask, uh, Mrs. Belinski to bring the binder to the board meeting next week. Those of you that were at the curriculum committee meeting last week got to see it, but it's really impressive work. And, and the best part about it is that, you know, while she led it, this was all teachers, and they were fantastic. Um, and just, just a testament to the quality of teachers we have. Of course, we're getting ready to roll out the star assessments this year, star reading, star math. Um, principals and teachers very, very positive that we're going to have star math and be able to identify, um, those kids that are below benchmark, um, in math and, and the interventions that are needed, um, rolling out the math software this year, uh, Dreambox for K to four, iXL for five to eight, which is going to address the fluency, the, the math fact fluency gap that exists. So, just some wonderful things there. Um, really a renewed focus on data and being more data-informed in our decision-making. Um, I did a little snapshot at the curriculum committee meeting last week on our data. Um, some of it's good, some of it's not so good. Um, in October, I'll do a more formal presentation for the board when the PVAS data comes in, giving you a really broad picture of what our district data looks like in terms of growth and achievement. But our administrators have been great, we've really had just kind of honest and candid conversations that this is everybody's data. We all own it, you know, the K to four principals care just as much about the junior high data and vice versa. And so, that's really the message that we've given to the administrators, that they're giving to the teachers, and so that's, that's very exciting. We had a data summit January thirty-first and just had, just had some really hard conversations, went around, looked at the data and said, what looks good, what doesn't? Um, you know, that, that kind of thing. But, but keeping in mind that education is still a people business, and while data is extremely important and it's the measuring stick that exists for us, we're, we're still educating kids and we're educating the whole child, and so we have to look at data through the lens of also building relationships and those kinds of things that we're doing. And then the last thing I'll mention is in terms of professional development, we really have a very, um, focused systemic and systematic PD plan for this year. We're going to focus on differentiated instruction, um, the October in-service day. Um, we're going to focus on what is differentiation in the morning, do some presentations, and then in the afternoon, we're going to give teachers time to go back to their buildings, dive into the data and do some action planning, and use protocols to go through the data and figure out what next steps need to be. And then in January, we're going to give them the instructional strategy, show them how they can differentiate better in the classroom with kind of a conference-style professional development day, where we're going to have teachers do the presentations, leverage some of that, you know, internal expertise. And as I, as I shared with, um, you know, several folks, it's, it's kind of the progression of, eh, you know, the data is the fish. When we give you the data, we're going to emphasize the importance of fishing and showing you how to fish. And then in January, we're going to teach you how to become a better fisherman or fisherwoman, if you will. So, if you want to kind of use that analogy and kind of play that out, that's how we're looking at it. So, it's, it's a super exciting time of year, um, and a lot of, a lot of great stuff going on. Uh, I do apologize, I was hoping to have the minutes done so that they could have been in your folder for tonight. I'll make sure I get those out so that those of you that weren't at the meeting last week can, can get some more of the details, but a lot of great stuff going on right now.
And I'll just, um, also say, in the Reading Eagle on Sunday, there was a, I don't know if anyone saw it, but it was a, like, a, an insert on Back to School. And Exeter was highlighted in there, um, talking about Mr. Campbell, um, as well as Julie, um, not Julie, Rose was quoted in talking about some of those programs and the star assessments. So, um, I thought our district looked really good in there. And, um, I'm personally, as, as the chairperson for the curriculum committee, very pleased with Dr. Winters and his, uh, initiative and everything that's been going on, and I'm excited to see the data as well and see how our students achieve some improvement and growth. Because that's what we're about, right?
Yep, absolutely.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
He did all of that without notes. I'm impressed. He's got the whole binder, they don't give it to you.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Hacker, thank you, Dr. Winters. So, his committee, Mr. Bree.
I have nothing else to add.
Thank you, Mr. Bree. Um, personal committee, Mr. Chapina.
Just two things, I'd like to thank the administration for offering the ad hoc transportation committee members the opportunity to interview the, uh, candidate that was hired tonight for the assistant position. I think some members took on the opportunity to participate in those interviews, so I think Jerry Brown would be awesome to take.
And I was instrumental too.
You were, Jerry, you were.
You were your best behavior.
That's why God gave you, that's why God gave you two ears and one mouth, Jerry. We also have a personnel issue that was on the agenda tonight, but been removed and there'll be further discussion of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chapina. Uh, policy committee, uh, really nothing to report. Uh, we will continue to slug away at the, uh, at this massive policy process, but I would say we're just about, if we were into the, we're into personnel, which is great, Christine is helping with that. And, um, you know, hopefully, you know, I'm hoping we're about halfway through. Technology committee, Mrs. Patient.
I have no report.
Thank you, Mrs. Patient. Uh, Exeter Community Education Foundation, Mrs. Hacker.
She just left.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She knew you were going to call her.
I was like, hey, Patrick's here and Amy, so I don't have to talk.
She might get the chance.
No, I do have a write-up from Amy, so this, you know, she, she sends these to me, which is awesome. Um, Asgama ECEF is continuing to do great things. Um, before I read Amy's write-up, I'm really excited that they'll be at opening day tomorrow, um, uh, her and, um, Ms. Levine, yeah. Um, giving, you know, acknowledging the, the teacher mini-grants. Um, and I think it's important for teachers to see, to see them and hear what they're doing for, for the, for them, really. So, um, I'm excited about that, I hope it goes really well, I'm sure will. So, additionally, um, ECEF, they complete their eleventh annual golf tournament on August third. Thanks to our committee sponsors, golfers and supporters, we noted an all-time high of thirty-two thousand dollars. We are especially pleased that many school board members participated, as well as administrators that golf sponsored and or volunteered at the event. Six hundred and fifty dollars of these proceeds were used to support the purchase of five portable Wi-Fi hotspots for Reiten students. Um, Amy also wanted me to mention that, um, um, that they, the, the fifteen hundred dollars that Mascaro, um, challenged, they gave a, a challenge grant, as was mentioned at July's meeting. Um, thanks to Ken Levine, Jack Linton, Julie Klein, Len Corbin and Melunus Company, they were able to rise to the challenge and help make fifteen hundred thou, I'm sorry, fifteen hundred dollars turn into four thousand five hundred. So, that was pretty awesome. Um, and I'm super excited to not be pregnant next year and attend a golf party. So, not to golf, but to golf ball. No, no. Um, ECEF also is pleased to share that Exeter Township School District is one of eight finalists in the running for a statewide fifty K grant made possible by the Med Ed Foundation slash Berks County Community Foundation, um, in support of Exeter's LED conversion. So, yeah, this application was made by ECEF on the district's behalf. Heidi Williamson came to the high school on August ninth to take pictures of the conversion and to ask additional questions relative to Exeter's conversion project. We will know their decision at the end of the month when the group meets in Pittsburgh at their annual meeting. So, that's super exciting. In August, ECEF met with the Exeter Township School District Music Chair, uh, Mrs. Melissa Crowdie, and Exeter Parents in Residence, Janet Greeden and Randy Newham, Newham, um, were there. They were pleased to report that this meeting has resulted in twenty thousand dollar donation to ECEF in support of the music department's box truck. Exeter Music Association, ECEF and Mrs. Crowdie will be working together to help seek additional donations in support of this purchase. ECEF received a check for two thousand five hundred and twenty dollars from the Maydays Committee, even though they had all that rain, or that not so nice day, in support of the district's wish, wish list, and they're able, uh, they're getting twelve walkie-talkies, two additional walkie-talkies per school. While the weather sure didn't cooperate twice, we're proud to say the event ended an important wish list item for our schools and our students. This Saturday, and I also, uh, was in contact with Mr. Custodes about this, um, marks Exeter's Walk for Literacy, the Back to School Blast. Um, and it's in support of ECEF as well. Uh, this fun event, end of summer event, includes live music, a walk through the grounds of Reading Country Club, literacy author visits and finishes with fireworks at the Reading Country Club this Saturday. The event starts at three P M., and we hope to see you and your family there. A final thank you to Dr. Winters again, you're a man of the night, for including ECEF in tomorrow's welcome back, which, I'm, I didn't read this actually until now, so. Uh, welcome back day, um, for the town, for the Exeter Township School District staff. Uh, the ECEF and our board members appreciate the new and inclusive ways he's supporting ECEF. So, thank you, Dr. Winters. Um, and I think that's, that's pretty much it. I mean, ECEF is doing amazing things and they continue to be, and they really do want to help our teachers and help our school and, um, help our students. So, thank you.
Thanks for that report. Okay, uh, we're going to move to DCTC, Joint Operating Committee, Dr. McPunnet.
Uh, I do not have a report because they actually gave us the month of July. With pay. Yeah, same to you.
Same to you, I get this.
You don't need pay, you get that great meal every now and then.
That's true, yeah. Well, then I had a loss because I didn't get the meal.
I do have a question for Dr. McPunnet.
Yes.
Uh, it's for Hunt, he wants to know.
I would hear that.
What, what's going on with the meal they're trying to make us?
I don't know, they said it was going to be in the fall, did we get a date, you know, that we're all?
Again, there was discussion amongst the board that we not go outside our district.
Aye.
So.
I was kind of.
I thought we did agree. We did agree to do that, though, maybe.
So, I spoke to Dr. Rens and we'll have a.
The motion is.
We'll have a date.
Right, I know you had said earlier in the spring it was going to be in the fall, so.
Yeah, I'll check to see what the date is from Dr. Craft.
You want to see me tomorrow, so I can ask also, we have our meeting tomorrow.
Oh, absolutely, you can ask me, but we're sure our ladies, but I'll have Donna check as well.
Yeah, okay.
And I don't think we excluded having a meeting there, I think that was well worth another's opinion.
Buck, buck.
It was facts, man, it wasn't his opinion, though.
We've had meetings, we've had, we've had meetings at that location previously where we conducted business successfully. And because all of our meetings are recorded, we're not keeping anything to the public, anyone in front of the public, the length of choice of the meeting is well for the shortest. So, I have no reason why we could not continue with that practice.
And I think we did agree that we would, we entered all the discussion.
I mean, you, uh, maybe to make Mr. Hunter happy.
Say, Mr. Hunter.
Uh, we could have that on just our workshop.
I think that'd be a good idea.
That way it could feel like we're not building outside of our district.
Well, they have, they have a many, a large list of districts that want to do it, so if, we may have it on a workshop session or workshops or a voting session. I will ask them and see what we're doing.
We can always live stream it back here for anyone in the room. Ooh, there you go.
And how can we say here?
There you go.
I do just want to reiterate my point that I don't think that it's good governance to take your meeting location from the same meeting spot that we have every month, unless there's a need, like going to Reiten because we have a contentious issue. And I have no problem with us going on a night where we're not at a workshop or a voting meeting. And that would be my preference, just the same as we do for any one of our committee meetings, which most of us show up to anyways. And I want to be, I want to be a reminder, you're being a stick in the bud. I've choice words for you, sir.
Okay, thanks, Dr. McPunnet. We're going to move on. Um, BCIU board directors, uh, as thirsty, I attended the IU board meeting and, uh, yeah, special recognition. And our own Mike Chapina was in attendance, uh, in support of his CEO, um, John Morhan. Uh, John received, uh, the special outstanding community partner for two thousand eighteen. He's the, uh, as I said, he's the executive director of, um, Penn State Health at St. Joseph's. And, uh, very instrumental in, um, you know, relaunching of the BCIU Project Search Program, the five K that was held uh, in support of, um, I think it was the United Way Campaign, and also, uh, something you've heard from Mike Chapina about, which is the Stop the Bleed, uh, program, which is, uh, very, was very highly, um, regarded and one of the, I think one of the primary reasons why, um, he was selected for that war. So, I want to thank Mike for being there and supportive of, uh, your CEO, but also, you know, it was good to have Exeter represented, uh, as we did that, for that meeting as well. Uh, at that meeting also, uh, they ratified the hundred thousand dollar grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services for the Crisis Go Application Program, which is for the, uh, uh, the, the computer application, uh, that's for the essential emergency preparedness. And they appointed Carl Blessing as the coordinator of safety. And they appointed Carl Blessing as the coordinator of safety and security. Per Act 44, Carl is the CFO of the ECF. I also attended their opening in service today for 1,200 staff, which was really exciting. And they had David Cooper do a presentation. He's a motivational speaker. He happens to be a friend of Dr. Joe Hackman, who's the executive director of the IU. He spoke on creating a culture of excellence and was extremely well-received by the 1,200 employees who were there today. They do a really nice job. Joe Hackman is, I think, recognizes probably one of the best of the executive directors of the 29 IUs throughout the United States of Pennsylvania. And, and she's...
She's good, though.
She is good. She's not that good.
Not the United States, but Pennsylvania.
Did you say she's not that good?
She's not that good.
She's really good.
So, that's all for my report.
Dr. Hemmer, what does that help?
It helps at Newhamburg High School.
Can 1,200 people in there?
They did. They have the backs of a balcony. Yeah, it's pretty neat. And they came to breakfast and lunch and...
Oh, you're getting fed.
I didn't have either. I just stayed for a couple. So, let's save the ASAN. Back to you, Mr. Noah.
With no report, I told was given the month off by the US Congress and the state justices.
Uh, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute. They actually were in session against protocol. What are you doing, man?
Township for a late sun, Mr. Chapina.
Fortunately, I have no report because I have not made an effort to be in touch with either representative of those places over the last couple of weeks, so I will try to get that going.
Okay, and we're gonna move on to payment requests. Mrs. Page.
Yes, Ellen. We have a payment request for a total amount of payments for the general fund From the capital reserve, we have $311,784.59. And from capital project funds, $582,172.81. For total for all funds was $2,213,911.69. I believe that we pay our bills for this month of August 28th.
Second. Motion and a second any discussion. All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion, Terrence. Superintendent's report, Dr. Phillips.
Thank you, Dr. Hemmer. The district is quickly racing toward opening day on Monday, August 27th. Final touches to cleaning and polishing the buildings are in progress. Administrators have prepared their faculty presentations. Parents and guardians have been logging in onto Skyward to get their student schedules and transportation information. Tomorrow is the Welcome Back Day for our staff. That will start with a breakfast presented jointly by our teacher and support staff unions. We will then gather as one whole team in the auditorium for some presentations and the initial screening of the 2018 Exeter Township Spirit video, a year in review. I have been told it will begin via box office head. He's way back there. He's the Spielberg of the event. I did have down here to make a comment that the Exeter Community Education Foundation will also be there to spread some joy. Mrs. Hacker has said that their joy will be at the Teacher Awards. So, we'll be highlighting them tomorrow.
Oh, wait, was that a secret?
Anymore?
Oh.
We're trying to make everything a secret, like the video, but it gets out. Dr. Winters and I will be highlighting some district updates, and then the staff will be treated to a chicken barbecue. Those that have asked for it, this year will be able to have a vegetarian option. After lunch, teachers will report to their buildings. Support staff will complete the Act 126 mandated reporter training in the afternoon at several locations. I want to commend all the incredible hard work done over the summer by the teachers and administrators. I saw teams of teachers working, sometimes sweating, specifically in this room when we had some air conditioning issues in our buildings, and they did not stop. They worked right through it. They did a lot of great things. As you heard, we as a district have pivoted to utilizing data to inform us. We're going to be utilizing assessments quarterly through use of the STAR reading and STAR math programs, as well as other assessments. We've heard about construction. It has taken place, as Mr. Chapina said, in some form, big or small, in all of our buildings this summer. But again, I want to highlight and thank the board for moving up the secure vestibles to this summer. All our buildings now have some type of secure vestible. As Mr. Pruswe has stated, new HVAC systems have been built in Jackson Hole and Lorraine and will be in place for the first day. We have begun to put in place the work to remediate the area behind Reifton, and that will eliminate the concerns of ice buildup when the students exit the building to go to the resource area. As far as curriculum, construction and every other change that has taken place, they are all positive for the district and our students. And with the change comes the need for flexibility and adaptability, and we are all, we'll all be taking on these changes together. And again, once again, to Laad, Audrey Dickman. She has been at the forefront of the Stop the Bleed movement and has been an integral part of getting this program started in our area and has been recognized on a national level for this. That is my report for tonight. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Dr. Phillips. I just wanted to mention to the board that we are planning a retreat for the board September 29th. It's a Saturday morning. I hope folks can make it. Please check their calendars. And if you have a conflict, let me know, but we're in the midst of putting together an agenda. It's pretty full. We have a breakfast that we're considering off-site location, as a matter of fact, for this, for this particular retreat.
Any objection, Hunter?
Listen. How about my house? Have a kid.
Do you want to?
You're a housewife. You're a housewife.
I... I like your house better. Also, if folks are planning on coming, if any board members are planning on coming to the morning presentation tomorrow, just let me know because I would like to introduce you up. I would like to introduce board members to that presentation tomorrow, so just let me know if you have a minute.
And you are all invited for the lunch as well.
Yes.
I mean, we're paying for it, right?
You have to pay. Yes, you must pay.
No, it says on here.
I'm married at the school.
Are there any, are there any board members who would like to be heard at this time?
I have one. I just wanna, I started talking a little bit about the Walk for Literacy, but I just wanted everyone to be aware. I was participating in it a little bit last year and hope to participate more this year, which isn't happening. But it's a really fun event. It's this Saturday at the Reading Country Club. It starts at 3:00 PM. And there's going to be, the vision is really to create a neighborly, community-focused atmosphere. It's a great way to end summer before the new school year begins. So, it's kind of a really big community event. The event will also mark, in this prequel, the first time fireworks at the Reading Country Club, like going off above the castle. And some of the events from the May Day community festivals that will ring out will also be incorporated into the event, so we're looking forward to some things. The first performance of the year by the Exeter Cheerleaders, so they'll be there. Disney's Muana will be there. A walk led by Exeter senior Abigail Henry. And there'll be a live concert by Berks native Stephanie Grace. And like I said, the first time for, the first time ever fireworks over the castle. In addition, there'll be free school stuff for kids, pencils and notebooks, and lots of swag donated by Iraq. So, it's a cool event if you can come out and support, you know, community and school district. A walk, I believe, Mr. Cauldron, a retired Exeter teacher, takes the walk he did last year, and he tells you certain historical facts and things about the animals, and that was really cool. And we did that last year. So, I read a story last year and had apples for the kids, but like I said, I will not be in attendance this year, at least in physical presence, but spirit-wise, I'll be there. So, hopefully, you can join us or join the Exeter Walk for Literacy. The library will be there. I think ECF, I think CHIPS program comes, and I think they have books for kids. So, just a cool, cool, community-driven event. So, I just wanted to share that with everyone tonight.
Proceeds benefit?
I think ECF.
I believe so.
Yes, I believe so as well.
Any other...
I'm gonna be that guy again.
No.
I just wanted to...
Why break your streak?
I just wanted to share something timely. We chose this year not to raise taxes in part because of an improving economy and the weight that that would have on our revenues for this year. And I just wanted to highlight quickly how important that really is, not only for the school district but for parents and families. With the unemployment rate being as low as it is, with the quarterly growth of 4.1%, this has serious impacts for our community, not just an abstract reality for the country. And I think that we're seeing that, and I hope to continue seeing this type of growth throughout the year in our revenues to better, to better our position fiscally. And I would say that nationally, we have some serious problems, including social security being insolvent within the next two decades, $60 billion pension debt in Pennsylvania. And all of those things really have a weight on the school district and how we run our operation. And with this improving economy, and hopefully it can continue for a long period of time, we might be in better fiscal position, and I just hope that we can all be mindful of how that impacts the school district.
Thank you, sir. Motion, Terrence.
I have a question. Why did you, why are you thinking about changing the venue for our retreat? I mean, is this a self-convenient?
It's to really kind of throw something different out there.
It's not a swimming.
It's a little, it'll be, I think it'll be interesting.
I don't think it'd be a home.
Give it a break.
Well, I just hope we don't have to go too far.
We won't go too far. We're going to Penn State.
We don't have a picnic anymore. We don't have a Christmas holiday gathering. No more ice cream. No more ice cream. We don't have ice cream at work.
I think, I think he'll want to.
Wait, there's water. Mrs. Peja bought us all those recyclable bottles, and we have our water cooler out there.
Our motion.
You have one, Mr. Brady. You just did great.
Thank you, we are done.